Good evening, I'm going to call to order the Burnsville Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 28th. Commissioners, staff, thank you for, and our audience, thank you for coming out in this beautiful evening. Our first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes?
None from staff.
None from staff, any from commissioners?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
It's moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, approval of the minutes from the April 22nd, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Any changes or edits to that from staff?
None from staff.
None from staff, any from commissioners?
Nope.
Alright, I would entertain a motion for that as well.
It's been moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that takes us to item three, which is a public hearing for United Properties for a concept and development stage planned unit development for construction of an office warehouse building rezoning from GIM Gateway Industrial Medium to GIM PUD Gateway Industrial Medium Planned Unit Development, an interim use permit to allow the outdoor storage of storage container pods and preliminary and final plot of a two lot industrial subdivision of YRC NUSAS Second Edition located at 12400 DuPont Avenue South.
Well done.
That's the shortest of the titles tonight. Ms. Arnold?
Thank you Chair, good evening, planning commissioners. So, the application is to rezone the 47 acre subject site from GIM to GIM PUD to subside the current parcel located there to create a separate 6.9 acre parcel in the southwest corner of the property and then, as mentioned, the interim use permit. The subject site is currently zoned, GIM Gateway Industrial Medium, guided MRQ, the Minnesota River Quadrant, and the comprehensive plan. The properties to the northwest and east are also in the Gateway zoning district, Gateway Industrial Medium zoning district, and the properties to the south are within the B4 Highway Commercial zoning district. So, this property is at the western edge of the Gateway overlay and subject to standards of the Gateway Design Manual. Office Warehouse is a permitted use and outdoor storage is an interim use in this zoning district. Again, so this proposal will create an additional lot that YRC intends to sell to the applicant in United Properties to construct this new office warehouse building as a continuation to their Burnsville industrial developments that are immediately to the west and south near Oliver Avenue. The proposal is to construct a 96,192 square foot office warehouse building that will front to the south on 126th Street West. The proposal is for the planned unit development to request deviations to performance standards within the ordinance to provide flexibility in the development of the proposed lot. The interim use permit for outdoor storage of storage container pods has been requested to accommodate a prospective tenant within the spec building. So, YRC Freight operates the existing trucking terminal which occupies the one large parcel of land mentioned before. So, the city council in 1968 approved a conditional use permit for this truck terminal facility for yellow equipment. The facility was platted into a three lot subdivision in 2014 to sell off a portion of their land to NUSCO, creating the YRC NUS addition. This plat also dedicated right of way for the Kenwood Trail extension of County Road 5 and the future Cliff Road West relocation project. So, as part of this plat, NUS Trucking was granted an interim use permit for outdoor storage and sales as an expansion of their services. A condition was included that their interim use permit expires when YRC ceases operation as a trucking facility and the site redevelops. So, this application is not considered a redevelopment of the YRC facilities as their property and operation are remaining the same as approved under their existing conditional use permit. So, the proposed YRC NUS Second Edition consists of two industrial lots. Lot one is the existing YRC facility, lot two is the United Properties proposal. The plat requires the dedication of drainage and utility easements and an adjustment of those lines as one is currently north-south through the proposed lot two. So, it will be proposed to move and vacated as part of the same city council meeting that this application will be on. Okay, so, benefits of the planned unit development. The proposed site will be a continuation of the Burnsville Industrial Campus of United Properties buildings as mentioned before to the south and west of the subject site, bring new employment to the area during construction and after completion of the proposal, includes environmentally efficient stormwater management technology to reduce sediment contributions to existing city infrastructure, implements zerescaping techniques into the overall landscaping plans throughout the development. The proposal incorporates additional landscaping materials onto the existing trucking facility property, acting as screening of the industrial use at the locations where the property fronts public roads. New building acts as screening to the parking storage area associated with the existing trucking facility to the north. The proposal exceeds parking lot landscaping requirements at 11% increase from the required 8% for the GIM zoning district, exceeds landscaping requirements with the number of overstore trees provided, and exceeds building perimeter landscaping with an additional six linear feet. Deviations requested as part of this proposal, both lots will be requesting a deviation from the 30% green space requirement for the GIM zoning district. So, the proposed lot one containing the existing facility at 20.4% green space and the proposed lot two containing 24.8% green space. There's a deviation to parking setbacks in three locations. The south side of the proposed lot two, fronting 126th, deviation from the parking setback on the south side of proposed lot one adjacent to the proposed development where there is existing pavement and they're just, the deviation is created from where the property line is being proposed. Deviation the north side for the new development, cut five feet from the proposed lot line. So, this would be to accommodate standards for truck turning areas into the loading docks. Deviation for the monuments size requirement, so that 126th per the comprehensive plan is just a city street and is allotted 20 square feet and a monument sign. The proposal meets the height standards for the monument signs but is wider and so the deviation is for 48 square feet, which staff does support. And then a deviation from the 24 feet maximum driveway width at the public street right of way line for the left entrance for truck access. And staff is supportive of all the deviations requested as part of this proposal. Shown here is the site plan for the new construction portion of the proposal. Again, the new construction is in the southwest corner of the existing 47 acre parcel. So, the existing building and parking surfaces on the proposed lot one are not proposed to be changed as part of this application. The applicant is proposing 154 parking stalls within their surface parking lot which does provide 34 more stalls than the required amount. The applicant has indicated that the additional parking provided is to account for office uses within the office warehouse building for the potential tenants that may sign onto the building at a later date. So, the parking provider can support up to 37% office per our current ordinance standards. So, a condition's been added stating that the makeup of the office portion of the entire building cannot exceed 37% unless parking is adjusted accordingly to meet the ordinance. And to see the deviations from the parking setbacks, they would be on this lot line here for both the south lot line of lot one and the north lot line of lot two, and then the south on 126th parking setback request as well. The applicant is requesting these deviations in order to accommodate the anticipated parking needs of the development with the office account of the office warehouse building. Additional parking lot islands have been provided as a benefit to the proposal as a mediation for this. In the Gateway Design Guidelines for this area, the Gateway District, a maximum of two double loaded parking aisles between the right of way and the building is allowed. The applicant is proposing two single loaded aisles enhanced by parking lot islands consistent with the design Gateway standards. The surface parking lot has two entrances, again, one of which is in excess of the 24 feet requirement which can be approved as a deviation by the city engineer when accommodating a truck loading area for turning. There's a loading dock on the north side of the building for the warehouse use. This is also the proposed area of the proposed interim use for the outdoor storage, which I'll get to later in my presentation. This is the landscaping plan of the new development to highlight that area. So, there's a requested deviation in green space, however, the proposal exceeds ordinance requirements with the additional parking lot landscaping and building perimeter landscaping. The applicant is also implementing zerescaping techniques that go above and beyond our ordinance requirements, and the landscaping plan meets ordinance requirements and plant diversity provisions in other areas. This plan highlights the entire 47 acre parcel here to show the additional landscaping materials that the applicant was able to provide on the existing yellow freight trucking facilities parcel to act as screening in between the public road and the facility itself. There are also existing landscaping materials that will remain on the YRC parcel. Some trees will be removed as part of this application. There are a number of ash trees along the southern property line here, as well as in a few spots, fronting 100, or DuPont on the other end. So, the ash trees are not original to the property, they were installed as screening after the development of the YRC site. Ash trees are also no longer allowed to be installed within the city due to the Emerald Ash Bore. So, on developed land, there's not a deforestation threshold, but a conditional condition has been added regarding the tree removal permit. So, the existing yellow freight building on the proposed lot one is not going to be changed as part of the application, but the proposed United Properties building consists primarily of precast concrete wall panels with prefinished metal canopy accent materials and glass windows incorporated on the street facing south elevation. The entrances to the building have increased height of sod incorporating the panel of additional height over the entrance and a continuation of two separate colorings which are included in your report. Color samples of the proposed exterior materials are attached, as I mentioned. I also have photos of the other buildings that are in the development. The intent is for them to be a continuation of this existing industrial campus inconsistent with those materials that I can show later on. The proposed building is consistent with the ordinance, with materials, as well as the existing, or the proposed trash enclosures and other So, outdoor storage is an interim use in the Gateway Industrial Medium District for moving forward and enhancing the plans of the Minnesota River Quadrant vision for this area of the city. So, the office warehouse is requesting this outdoor storage use as part of the building for a proposed tenant in the rear loading area for storage of empty storage container pods. So, the city has approved temporary outdoor storage uses on an interim basis in this district in recent years. The interim use shall terminate within one year of city council approval if the outdoor storage is not utilized and the prospective tenant's lease is not executed. There's information in the report on that, and the interim use permit would terminate in 15 years on January 1st, 2034. The state is consistent with similar interim use approvals in the GIM zoning district and with adjacent properties that are utilizing an interim use permit at this time. So, the outdoor storage area is shown to the north of the building in the rear loading dock area. The applicant has provided a concept of the landscaping materials that would be added to 100% screened the outdoor storage area as well as fencing materials. The interim use permit is being requested, as I said, to accommodate this potential tenant. So, as the applicant does not anticipate a demand for outdoor storage at the new building, and a condition is included with the one year sunset on this, as well as the typical sunset within an interim use permit that's utilized throughout the city. There's also the condition added that when, in the event that it is utilized, the applicant will present a full screening plan to city staff for approval as part of their building permit review. Engineering considerations and related improvements included with this proposal are the construction of the Vituuminous Parking Lot, new service extension improvements for utilities, the stormwater, as noted, is a benefit to the proposal. They're utilizing an existing regional pond and then providing more modern technology to reduce sediment into that existing city pond asset. The sanitary sewer line is going to be rerouted around the proposed building and connected to the Met Council trunk sanitary sewer line. Easement over the existing sanitary sewer line is being dedicated on the plat where none existed prior. Development fees associated with the application are park dedication, tubemapping costs, and erosion control inspection development fees, as well as engineering related permits that would be required as part of the proposal, work within the right of way, a construction permit from MCES, and the NPDES general construction permit. So, here are the grading drainage and erosion control plan and the utility plan, which I can come back to if there are related questions, as we have our engineering consultant here tonight, as well as the applicant. Recommendations. So, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the application as subject to the following conditions. One, the conditions of previously approved CUP shall remain in full force and effect. This is related to the existing conditional use permit for the YRC trucking facility. The existing easement encroachment labeled on the survey addressed by the property owner and Met Council prior to future development on the proposed lot one. The proposed lot one is the existing YRC facility with an easement encroachment. The interim use permit shall expire one year from city council approval, and if not utilized, and if it is utilized, shall terminate January 1st, 2034. As mentioned, similar to other sunset dates for similar interim use permits in that zoning district. The outdoor storage area shall be limited to storage of containers and a screening plan shall be approved by the city prior to utilizing the storage concept. The allowable percentage of floor devoted to office shall, office use shall not exceed 37%. As mentioned, that is the amount that they would be allowed per the ordinance based on current parking provided in the plan. City engineer approval required for the driveway width, that will come at the time of building permitted, and is also a deviation included with this. Engineering has reviewed the application already as well. Tree removal permit required to any work being conducted on the site to remove the ash trees, as mentioned. Landscape security for the site will be held for 12 months following city acceptance of the landscape installation. Outdoor storage area shall be 100% screened from view of the adjacent properties and the right of way prior to storing any materials. The existing eight foot fence illustrated on the survey as encroachment D that encroaches over the west lot line shall be removed from city property prior to the issuance of permits. Sign criteria plan and comprehensive sign plan for the multi-tenant building. So, the freestanding sign was shown to be larger than ordinance standards on this application, but while sign is not yet proposed, as the tenants are not locked in. So, that would be required for any multi-tenant building in the city. Exterior light fixtures shall be downcast shielded on all faces. The photometric plan that is provided currently meets the ordinance. The preliminary approval is subject to the vacation of the existing drainage and utility easements. As mentioned, that vacation public hearing is scheduled for the June 4th city council meeting, provided that this application moves forward. And then development fees in the amount of $65,656.90 provided prior to the release of final plat for recording this Dakota County. And as mentioned, we can go back to those if needed, but photos of the existing buildings within their current industrial park development. So, I can stand for questions about the conditions if I need to go into further detail. This is also a public hearing, and a representative from the applicant is in the audience as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, that was very thorough. The, can I ask one question about the outdoor storage component, or outdoor storage pods, is that a pretty standard, standard thing? When you say outdoor storage pods, is that, I mean?
Standard in a way. So, at the moment, the applicant has indicated that it's a confidential tenant.
Okay.
From his perspective, so this is the?
But from our perspective?
Yeah, just a standard storage container pod that you may see for, that they'll be empty on site.
Yeah.
And utilized by different customers of the business and will come and go as needed.
Commissioners, we do have U-Haul in the Minnesota River Quadrant area that stores these same types of?
Okay.
Pods.
But that's kind of, that's not something there's a lot of diversity from in the?
Right.
The industry, it's, okay. My other question for you, just for the purpose of any viewers who are paying attention, zerescaping, can you provide a description of what that is? I'm not sure that I've seen us use the term very often here.
Yeah, so zerescaping would be using landscape materials that maybe require less your great irrigation requirements, less water use in general, so that would be a low maintenance, a typically associated with native plantings, which are also on their landscaping plan.
Excellent. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Arnold? Commissioner Timmerman?
Yes, I have a few questions about the other properties that had previously been approved. With the conditions and what staff supports at this point, are there similar, I guess the one that I'm mainly considering is the green space requirement, were there similar, I guess, deviations for those particular properties? And can you explain staff's thought process as far as other properties in the area and being in support of a 10% deviation and a 5 or 6% deviation on that?
I could speak a little bit to that. So, in recent years and neighboring this property, the last time that this property owner cut off a portion of their property to allow someone else to redevelop it, the new property was granted planned unit development deviations for green space in order to accommodate both outdoor storage and sales. So, there was a similar planned unit development and interim use permit approved in 2014, similar sunset date with similar landscaping percentages. So, in the Gateway Design Manual that we, that is a extension of the zoning ordinance for the Gateway Industrial Medium and Gateway Industrial Heavy zoning districts, there are design standards showing building placement on lots, things that the city would encourage or like to see. And within that, some of the big emphasis is buffers in between, landscaping buffers in between the road and the parking in the building, and the implementation of the zerescaping, native plantings, unique landscaping features, and not so much on specifically the landscape percentage of the whole lot. So, in this case, this proposal, we can be supportive of it due to the number of landscaping materials that are being proposed. The overall green space percentage is receiving a deviation, but they are going above and beyond for the parking lot landscaping, and as shown in the mockup of landscaping over time, showing full buffering and screening from the public road after 25 years. Once the landscaping comes into its maturity, they're able to meet some of these design standards for what the Gateway District will someday look like when we're the city's vision of this mixed-use light industrial technical area comes to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Banky?
Arnold, just to sort of go on that, so the deviations are to the gateway standards or to current zoning?
Current zoning.
Which is the gateway standards?
It is the gateway standard. The gateway standard doesn't list out the specific green space requirements, if that helps answer.
All right, and then, of course, those deviations run over the land, so essentially anything that happens down the road, basically, the building that we see here is the building that will exist till some point in the future when it's redeveloped, if it's redeveloped.
Yeah.
And, again, clarification to the pods from the chair. We're not talking about railroad boxes or other multimodal type of corrugated metal structures, we're talking about proprietary storage box that a vendor uses for their, a customer on a temporary basis?
Yes.
Okay. And can you look into a little bit about this, this building that is over the Metropolitan Sewer Interceptor? I realize that it's, there's a condition that discusses that, but is that the corner of that building right there, in the middle of the land? Okay.
Yes.
Is that easement, or whatever it is that is south of what you're pointing at right now, is that to be a realignment for this at some point, or is that an easement that's provided for that in the future?
I can answer that one. The line that is actually diagonal there, cutting through the building, is an easement, but the line does not exist along that alignment. What you see in the dark is where the actual Metropolitan Council sewer line exists.
Okay.
And there is currently not a easement over that line. So, as a part of this plat, they will be dedicating that easement.
So, that plat then takes care of the issue, it's the condition for this item?
There's another, I guess I'd have to look back at the condition, but there's another, there's not, the existing city sanitary sewer line comes through the actual?
The city one?
Building, yep.
Right, right, not being rerouted around it?
Yes.
Right, okay. But I guess this, the discussion about the Metropolitan Council's easement and/or pipe is addressed by that plat?
Yes, dedicate, yes.
Okay. I guess the, I'm curious about the goal behind the one year versus 15 year IUP for the pods. It seems like it forces somebody to do something in a year to maintain the ability to use that for 15 years.
Yes, that's correct. And typically with an interim use permit or even a conditional use permit, if it wasn't utilized within a year anyway, the use would expire and there would be a need to come in for an extension or for something like that anyway. This was also something that was done as a suggestion. This was also something that was done as a suggestion with the applicant as we talked over what interim use meant, what the vision for the city was, things like that.
Yeah, I think the clarification was that it's, it's a normal one-year period.
Yes.
And that's, that answers the question, I think. I guess I'm curious that they're, that they're setting the building up for solar-ready, but they're not utilizing the buildings as some kind of a solar farm on their own initiative. They're waiting for customers that might utilize it.
That's correct. That's what was indicated as part of their narrative.
Yeah, I saw that. It'd be interesting, I think, if they just did it on their own. With all the over-parking comments that we've had lately, the desire to include the 34 extra stalls now is, is a goal versus just proof of parking for some future expansion of office?
They, it's not proof of parking. It is indicated that it will be installed.
That's what my, what my point is. Why wouldn't they simply do it as proof of parking that might otherwise be green space? This is their request.
This is their request.
Got it. I did, I was intrigued that they did the extra parking. I think that's a nice trade for, for the variances that they're asking for, for parking on my, from my point of view. Did they get into a little bit about what the sustainability issue of their buildings is? I mean, how they are considering the building sustainable?
And there's information in their narrative letter about the different techniques and tactics that they're going through, and it's briefly mentioned, and I can expand on that as well as having the applicant here.
Sure, I guess I was looking at the buildings themselves as opposed to how they're going to operate. So, there's nothing specifically unique about the building structures themselves that is sustainable. It's how they're gonna, it's how they're gonna use them, basically.
It's how they're going to use them and indications of the scorecards that they would use as they.
Oh, the scorecard, yeah.
Let me do, I wanted to follow up on the, just from a process perspective, on the interim use permit that expires after a year if, if not utilized. How is that, if that needs to be extended, does that come back through us or is that a staff?
It would come back to the city council, but not the planning commission, I believe. Yep.
No, that's good. Okay. Additional questions for Ms. Arnold? Okay, does, any questions for the applicant? Or does the applicant want to come up and clarify anything that's been said or answer any questions? Please introduce yourself for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is, sorry. My name is Brandon Champeau. I'm a senior vice president with United Properties. And I do have some members of our team here that can get into a little bit more detail if needed. But first off, just wanted to thank the city for working with us on this. We've got three buildings that we've developed over the last 10 years, and this was one that we were kind of carving out of an existing site, but appreciate the city staff working with us on some of the deviation requests, and we're hopeful that we're able to push this through and continue the momentum that we try to build, build here. I had a couple of things here that I was just going to address. One was the green space deviation request. It was, I would say, this is a bit of an extraordinary circumstance with YRC because we're, we're carving out a, you know, an existing lot that's already in place that, so we're removing some landscaping and then adding some landscaping back. But I don't believe that the previous buildings we've developed deviated from the city's standard at all. We've, we've met that and, and would have met this if we had enough space to do it, but we were really trying to kind of pigeonhole this into whatever corner we could while not impacting YRC's operations. So, that's, and that's really the, the reason for most of the deviation requests with setbacks and things, is we, we pushed the boundaries as far as we could possibly go on both sides. A comment about the, being solar-ready but not installing ourselves. We, we have done a, a similar building and actually brought our partner from the St. Paul Port Authority here, who's acting as our sustainability consultant on this. But we redeveloped the Midway Stadium site in St. Paul that we actually installed solar on. United Properties itself is not a solar developer. In that case, we worked with a solar operator. So, we, it was the exact same setup there, where we had, the, the structure was set up to add solar, which you can't come back and do typically afterwards. And then, when a operator came along, we worked on a license agreement with them and then they installed the solar. So, that's, you know, that's our intent here, is to hopefully find a similar, or achieve a similar outcome. And then, on some of the sustainability elements, I would actually like to have Monte from the St. Paul Port Authority come up and just comment on a few of these. He's, he sounds much smarter than I do in trying to talk about this stuff, but, but there are a number of things that we're doing as part of the base building design that would qualify as being, being above and beyond, I think, what would typically be seen. So, I'm going to have Monte explain that part.
Welcome.
Thank you for your time tonight. Chair members of the commission, the proposal here is to utilize Excel's Energy Design Assistance Program, which has been fairly well utilized for projects of this sort for almost 20 years now, since about 2003, 2002. And so, there will be structural improvements that come out of that process as the design team that works with United Properties interacts with Excel's energy modelers. So, for example, the window glazing itself will be improved likely as a result of that analysis. Wall insulation, ceiling insulation, so some of the core components that the landlord is expected to deliver would be structurally improved. We, I'm the past chair of the US Green Building Council here in Minnesota, and so we would think of that in terms of a lead designation as lead core and shell. So, the landlord's delivering a very sustainable core and shell. They obviously needed to negotiate with their tenants and their ultimate users as to what the operational components are for energy efficiency. But certainly, that Energy Design Assistance Program focuses on bundling rebates to encourage landlords to make these upfront improvements in the core and shell systems of the building. Very typically, 15 years of doing this on our projects in St. Paul, we've seen easily 20 to 30, even 40% improvements in energy efficiency out of the gate just with these core and shell improvements. So, we expect to see similar results here.
Sir, could you identify yourself for the record? I forgot to.
I'm Monte Holman, senior vice president of real estate development at the St. Paul Port Authority with my other hat on here today, our consulting entity called Port Consulting.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant, from anyone? All right. Thank you very much. I think we will move then to the public hearing, which will open at 7:03 PM. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward, identify yourself for the record. All right, we'll close the public hearing. I like rounding up to the next, 7:04 PM. Commissioners, discussion, additional questions, debate?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, I guess, I've been impressed with what United Properties did on that corner when it first went in, and I see this as an extension of that, just as they intend. I really see that the, the building, you know, with the deviations they're asking for are minor, and with it fitting into that existing space, I really see the building as a huge asset and the deviations is extremely reasonable. I'm encouraged by what they're doing with the building itself. I think they're right. I think that when you can, you can offer a building like this in the city of Burnsville, you're going to attract tenants. So, I think that that's a, a great piece of work on their part.
Additional comments? I would just echo Commissioner Benke's comments. I think this is a, a great addition to the community. I appreciate this, this last part about the sustainability aspects of it, I think are, make it stand out as a project. So, we appreciate your coming, coming to Burnsville for this. We obviously need to have a motion and start before I.
I do.
I made a little more closure comments there for a little before it. It's been moved. Is there, oh, we need a little more of a motion, don't we?
Sure. Chair, I'll move the Planning Commission recommend a city council approval of the application for United Properties for a concept and development stage planned unit development for construction of an office warehouse building, rezoning from GIM Gateway Industrial Media, Medium to GIM PUD. Interim use permit to allow the outdoor storage of the storage container pods as described and preliminary and final plat of the two-lot industrial subdivision of YRC, the second edition, located at 12400 Dupont Avenue South, subject to the following 14 conditions as written.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Timmerman.
I just want to comment that I, I am in support of the application. I'm concerned about the green space and I, knowing that there's going to be a large lake, hopefully someday, just north of this area, I'd like to see a lot of green space retained in this neighborhood. And so, if YRC does further develop, I think we should be really conscientious of those requirements going forward. That being said, though, I think it's a nice project and I'll support it.
Additional comments? If not, we will move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that goes to the city council on the 4th of June. Am I right on that?
That's correct.
June 4th at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much. That moves us to item four, which is a public hearing, application of the city of Burnsville to amend Burnsville City Code Title 10, Zoning, Chapter 22A, B4 Highway Commercial District to modify minimum building floor area standards. Ms. Garros.
This is a public hearing this evening. It is to consider an item that's on the Planning Commission's work plan for this year. One of the items that had been discussed previously, I believe had come up at city council level and then was discussed and included on the Planning Commission's work plan, was this particular item, and it relates to one of the standards that's in the city's B4 Highway Commercial Zoning District, and that is a floor area, minimum floor area requirements for buildings and restaurants. And generally speaking, the B4 zoning district is primarily located along Highway 13. It was established some number of years ago, about 30 years ago. There were, there have been a number of studies over the years and decades looking at how to not only improve the appearance of Highway 13 area, but also the function and transportation. So, for several decades, we've had this condition in the ordinance that requires this minimum standard, and it has been put together in terms of the B4 ordinance itself, and most of the provisions in that B4 zoning district have been around this entire time. Since they were developed, the comprehensive plan has been amended two or three times, and various other studies have been done. One of the largest is the Partnerships for Tomorrow, which was done in the 1980s. That was a very huge and in-depth visioning process that involved hundreds, literally hundreds of folks in the community and really established kind of Burnsville's operating procedure to look at partners and what can we do with various partnerships and how can we create those and expand those to accomplish, to accomplish the objectives that the city has. And ultimately, what those objectives come back to are, are comprehensive plan goals and policies, also the city councils' ends and outcomes that they do, and the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. There's a lot of information that was included in the background report, some of it duplicated more than once. I apologize for that. They said it was a new program, and we said there would be some glitches, so, yes, mine had some glitches, so I do apologize for the extra information, if you will. The specific criteria that we're looking at tonight is item A, and that's basically a standard that requires the minimum building area for buildings in the B4 districts to be 10,000 square feet. And then, there's another provision, when you're dealing with a restaurant, that they be a minimum of 5,000 square feet. And what the, what the issue is, is that we've had this standard in the ordinance for a long time, and in the information that I provided to you, I wanted to give you a little bit of background and history and how, when we look at, you know, just a standard like this, it looks like it might be just a one-off and, well, you know, why is it in there? What is it? Well, it is actually part of something that is a much bigger, much bigger opportunity that the city is, is looking to do, but it just happens to be one tool, if you will, in the entire processes and policies and things that the city has. In terms of the 10,000-square-foot standard, we have had a number of buildings constructed in the Minnesota River Quadrant and a couple actually in these B4 zones. Menards was constructed. They tore down a former Cub grocery store and rebuilt. U-Haul was constructed. They constructed a new building and additions. We've had other public properties that have been acquired and developed, the Sue Fisher Memorial Park, the Kramer, excuse me, the Kramer Preserve area. And so, there have been a number of things that have taken place, but there've also been, most of the development is really the same thing that's existed out there for 40, 50 years and maybe even more. And the difficulty in trying to change a development pattern really comes into play when you have existing development on a lot of small pieces of property that are owned by a lot of different people. On the north side of the Marquee, there's much more opportunity in the future because we've got three very large landowners, and the properties are basically vacant, the most probably with the quarry site and the adjacent properties, and then also the property to the north of that. You have a lot more opportunity to work with property owners, a few property owners, to, to accomplish objectives. In the case of this 10,000-square-foot requirement, the only site that we know of that has been dealing with this is actually a site that we'll be talking about later. Just happened to come up on the same meetings, had not planned to do that, but there is a conditional use permit, and they're required to expand that building to meet this standard. For the most part, this type of standard is commonly used. You usually see it more in developing communities, communities that maybe are just having the introduction of, you're out in a rural area and counties are starting to put in highways, the state maybe has a highway or a realignment, that type of thing. And these types of standards are common in trying to establish a development pattern in an area. And the idea is to try to reserve or preserve to the extent that you can the important intersections and the, the places where you have the most opportunity for a higher and better type of development. In Burnsville, we have the small uses, and we anticipate that we'll probably continue to see those uses develop over time, pretty much in the same way they have been. Primarily, they're, and I, I don't mean to indicate anything negative, a type, about the type of businesses, they just happen to be businesses that can exist the way they are, kind of a lower overhead, more outdoor storage, auto storage, those types of things. And there is a place for that in the community. We don't think as a staff that this 10,000-square-foot standard is, is helping to accomplish the overall objective for the Highway 13 corridor. And from a staff perspective, it's one tool, but really to be effective really needs to be part of something much bigger, including, you know, money that gets, that is made available for economic development, for, you know, consolidating properties and those types of things. And absent those programs, if you will, this standard doesn't seem to be accomplishing or has accomplished what it was intended to do. So, from that standpoint, staff is recommending that the standard be removed from the ordinance. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I appreciate the, the history of this too, because I think it is important to kind of know how things, why things are the way they are and the history of it, and I found it all to be just fascinating, particularly all these minutes that look like they've been typewritten.
They were.
So, any questions for Ms. Garros?
Sure.
Commissioner Benke.
As usual. Yeah, I guess, interesting your choice of words because, you know, while I, I'm not Yeah, I guess, interesting your choice of words, because, you know, while I'm not, while I'm supportive of the change for the very reasons that you mentioned, my first comment, my only comment was, what are the other tools? You know, I mean, is, is there, is this part of what the EDA is going to be looking at and using some of the funds for? I mean, and really, I'm speaking more to the audience right now, just for information The area is, has buildings that are fifty years, sixty years old, seventy years old. Obviously, some of them are ending or at the end of their life, and that doesn't mean they're going to go away, but it certainly means that the opportunity is going to start being more evident, that something new should happen there.
Yes.
And not all those lots are going to, would support a ten thousand square foot building either.
Exactly.
Is there goals to, to work on lot consolidation and larger scale development, or?
The, the Planning Commission, I believe you've been involved, or at least, you know, seen that the city has adopted an economic development strategic plan, so there are some general overriding policies and things. I don't believe that there is any funding to make a lot of those things happen. We do have some money available through tax increment financing that would allow for buildings to be cleared, but that would be about it at this point in time. The other things that have happened since this went into effect is the tools that are out there have been very much restricted over time. Tax increment financing, used to be able to use that for all sorts of different opportunities, really don't have much, much opportunity left, and what we can get, you know, we try to use. Other things that have happened is state law has changed in terms of non-conforming uses. You used to be able, as a community or a city, to be able to go in and look at either eminent domain, or if buildings were considered non-conforming and they burnt down, they needed to go away or be rebuilt to something conforming. Those laws have changed, and basically now, as long as you come in for a building permit within, I believe it's six months, one hundred and eighty days, of when there's damage to your non-conforming building, you can rebuild the same thing, and it can be there pretty much forever. So, just a lot of, lot of different things happening, but you're right, and I think the council is interested in looking at what potential opportunities there are, but as far as defining those and having those tools ready today, we don't have those.
Sure. I think the biggest tool, right off the bat, is council support for any kind of redevelopment, obviously.
Yes.
And I do, I do believe that that is where they are right now, too, so, anyway. Sure, thank you.
Additional questions? If not, we will open the public hearing at 7:18 PM. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. All right, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:19 PM. Commissioners, discussion or motion? Commissioner Roberts.
I would hope that this would open a, a door to a lot of people who saw this at ten thousand square feet and didn't even try. You know, that's a big, big building, for the stuff that people might want to put up, especially nowadays, so, yeah, wait for other people to talk, and then I might motion this, yeah.
Commissioner Banky?
To follow up on that, but, I, I mean, the, the next item is, is the example, I think, and that is a really good building, and the fact that it doesn't meet the standard doesn't change the fact that it, it's, it fits the site. It's, it's successful. It's successful in all, all the rest of it, so.
Why punish them for being that way?
Well, that's the next item, but yeah.
Yep.
I mean, as an example here, it's, it's, it really says that this isn't doing what it was intended.
I think your point, your point through your earlier questioning, this is, seems like a good tool for development, but not for redevelopment, is, is kind of the defining point for me. Additional comments or a motion?
I just have questions for Deb.
Commissioner, under center.
Just out of curiosity, have other cities done this as well?
I know of other cities, I've worked, in the past, I've worked with about thirty different cities, counties, townships in my career, and the outlying communities, it's pretty common to do something like this. But yeah, in, when you're dealing with something in the metropolitan area, no. In fact, Sarah did some research and just found one other of the market cities that, that had even anything related to it, and it wasn't.
And it wasn't a flat requirement, it was a percentage of the overall parcel square footage of, and that's how they utilized it, for, I think, ten percent. Many cities utilize like floor area ratio, but that would accommodate multiple levels and minimums, so it's not exactly the same as what we were dealing with as part of our ordinance requirements.
Floor, floor area ratios can work really well, though, so.
Commissioner Roberts.
I like the motion.
You indicated you would.
You gave me that look, yeah. I recommend in the City Council approval of the draft ordinance to delete the ten thousand square foot area standard and five thousand square foot restaurant-sized standards from the zoning ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner's the second? Was it, thank you.
Sorry, I should articulate.
I should speak louder.
Okay, now let's see if I can go find the agenda back on the pet web page here. This is the marathon, item five. Bear with me on this title. Next is a public hearing for the City of Burnsville for housekeeping amendments to sections of the City Code Title X zoning, Chapter 4, Chapter 7, Chapter 10, Chapter 12, Chapter 12A, Chapter 13, Chapter 18, Chapter 19, Chapter 20, Chapter 21, Chapter 22A, Chapter 22B, Chapter 22C, doing a lot on twenty-two, Chapter 23, Chapter 26, Chapter 26A, and Chapter 30A of the Burnsville City Code to update regulations to be consistent with current policies, correct language and definitions, add code citations and cross references, and add language to clarify standards and requirements. The amendment includes an update to the floodplain ordinance to incorporate the 2016 flood insurance study for Dakota County and letters of map amendment approved since 2011, as well as minor changes and updates related to manufactured home parks, commercial industrial performance standards, building height, uses and outdoor storage, landscaping and tree standards, signage, accessory buildings, throughlots, and to modify definitions. Ms. Arnold.
She just showed up over there.
Good evening again, the planning commissioners. So, as Chair Walter said, the purpose of this item is to consider minor updates to our zoning ordinance. And so these are proposed to clarify some of our standards and requirements, and to, in some of these cases, to significantly remove some outdated provisions, to add some citations and references to current zoning ordinance amendments that different cross-sections maybe weren't updated, to incorporate their changes, and then to incorporate some new city procedures and policies to meet the city council's direction. So periodically, staff will bring forward minor updates to these zoning ordinance, which we refer to as housekeeping changes, and so these are modifications as a whole to the ordinance to clarify and make corrections. So, the ordinance changes that we'll be reviewing this evening can be summarized as falling into these buckets. So some have come as a result of city council directions, some from staff, some from notes where they have cropped up in conversation with developers, applicants, contractors, and the like over time, and some as a result of just general tidying of different areas of the ordinance to improve the clarity and the intent. And so I'll move through the concepts of the changes quickly, and then take questions about the specifics at the end. So, for where we are adding new definitions and uses, there is a new definition for adult daycare, permitted wherever daycare nursery is currently permitted. Staff has been enforcing daycare nursery as to include adult daycare as it's become a more popular use, so this solidifies that as putting it wherever daycare nursery would be permitted. A new definition for pet grooming, both uses, both of these uses, adult daycare and pet grooming, have been requested and are more popular in recent years. Currently, pet grooming is only allowed as an accessory use to a pet shop, now it's a standalone use per zoning ordinance, or what is proposed to be. Added instruction learning centers to business districts, this definition was added as a previous housekeeping change and was incorporated in just one zoning district, now we have included it in many of the zoning districts, all commercial districts. The next bucket, modify standards for accessory structures on throughlots. This is a result of the April ninth City Council Work Session Direction, where there was council consensus to reduce the setback requirements by ten feet on a double frontage lot on the lot line that abuts the rear of the primary structure. So this is the additional front yard that a double frontage yard may have, and to clarify fence requirements within that additional front yard as well. The next bucket, updates to the floodplain ordinance. So for Burnsville, the 2016 flood insurance study increased the floodplain elevation of our lakes by point one percent. No map panels changed for the city, but we have changed, proposing language to change in the official zoning map section amended to reference this study. The next bucket, the manufactured housing district, this also comes as a result from city council direction, started out as a discussion at the all-day work session this year, and then was solidified at the April ninth City Council Work Session, where staff was directed to modify standards within the zoning district due to unique arrangements of the manufactured home park neighborhoods. Initial city council direction was to change enforcement policies. Through working with staff, we were able to present something at the April ninth work session the city council was highly supportive of, to change life safety issues within the zoning ordinance for the zoning district, rather than some of the aesthetic standards. So also made were changes to permitted accessory uses and interim uses. To be more clear, they were currently cross-referencing other zoning districts, and now we are adding each individual use as a list, rather than a cross-reference in that zoning district. Next bucket, modify commercial and industrial performance standards. So the performance standard disallowing certain materials within twenty-four inches of grade is proposed to be removed. This is one of the items that was on staff's list after discussion with developers, applicants, and contractors over many years, and with correspondence with the building official, has proposed to be removed from the zoning ordinance. We've added the reference to horizontal siding as the limited material in our materials standard section of the ordinance in both commercial and industrial zones. Right now, a primary or majority material is vertical fiber cement siding, whereas in limited, it just says fiber cement siding. We've added the word horizontal to make that more clear as to what the intent of that was, as a horizontal siding is more associated with a residential look, rather than commercial or industrial. And as, from the city council direction from the all-day work session, a provision was added that limited materials of no more than fifty percent of the facade, that should only apply on facades that face a street. The next bucket, as a city council consensus from the all-day work session, eliminating building height maximums in the Minnesota River Quadrant, HOC and MIX zoning districts. So letting building code and cost restraints be the limitations on height, rather than a zoning and land use limitation. Currently, exceeding building height standards is able to be done with a conditional use permit, and instead of having that be the maximum, other constraints would now be the natural maximum from a developing standpoint. And then just overall, general changes that you may note, removing language in sections outside the sign ordinance that refer to content-based signs. Within the last month or two, we have passed the new sign ordinance amendment, which removed some of these content-based languages from our ordinance. Modifying the outdoor storage section of the general provisions to clarify that language be concise with our sentencing. Clarifying that fences in mixed-use zoning districts are subject to commercial standards and not residential. Removing conflicting language within the R1 district related to plant sales. A referencing recent ordinance changes again to the sign ordinance, and then to accessory dwelling units, needed some cross-references in other sections of the city code. And then language removes stating that trees shall not encroach within easements, as there are some easements within the city where the intent is for trees to be within them, such as around our ponds, things like that. Language added that a landscaped area also includes gardening and water features. So, those are the general buckets of the changes within your packet. You have the redlined ordinance. Staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of the ordinance as presented. This is a public hearing, but I can also stand for questions about some of these specific changes, if you've reviewed your redline and would like some clarifications.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Can you clarify a little bit the, the, what you mentioned, the conflicting language on plant sales?
Yes, let me get to that section, just a moment.
This is like people that are selling plants in their yard, right? Or am I?
That's correct.
Okay. Or the driveway or something.
So, in page one hundred and twelve of your report, so there are currently two standards within that one family, R1 one-family zoning district related to selling plants. One says gardening uses incidental sale of plants is a permitted accessory use. The other one says horticultural use where no sale of products is conducted on site. So those were in conflict, and what we have chosen to do is remove horizontal uses where no sale of products is conducted on the premises, and amend the statement to add gardening and horticultural uses and incidental sales of plants as a permitted accessory use in a single-family zoning district, and that the infrequent temporary display and sale of plants or products is permitted by the occupant of the premises.
May have to start doing that, that's interesting. Any questions for Ms. Arnold? Commissioner Timmerman?
First of all, can you provide an example of a double, double frontage lot? And would that include a lot that may be more circular, like, for instance, on the entrance of a cul-de-sac? That could be triangulated to be considered to have double frontage?
So, a double frontage lot is where, they happen a lot in our subdivisions in the city, where the subdivision was plotted to back up to a thoroughfare, like a county road. So let's say you have a road running north-south that's parallel to Nicolet, and the backyards, or what's perceived to be the backyards of these residents, they back up to Nicolet. There's not another backyard of somebody else's home behind them. So that's a double frontage lot, because the ordinance defines a front yard as the yard that abuts a public road. So they have two official front yards.
So how is that different than a corner lot?
They are just defined differently. So a corner lot is considered, the front yard is the lot line that is the shortest on the public road, so there are two lot lines, instead of being considered two fronts, are considered a front and a side street. In the case of a double frontage lot, they're both considered fronts, because, let's say you have a row of four homes, four of them may front that road that's parallel to Nicolet, but the fourth, the last one may front Nicolet. That's maybe where their driveway is. So there's, they're both considered fronts for the consistency of the aesthetic standards of the ordinance, of setback being thirty feet back from the road, because homes will be in a line.
So the idea of this is, in their backyard, they could have their fence closer to the secondary frontage lot, basically?
Because in a normal front yard, the fence and the shed would not be permitted to be that close to the front lot line.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is about building height, and remind me what, what areas that was proposed for. That's heart of the city.
The mix MIX, mixed-use zoning district.
All mixed, okay.
All mixed, and then zones that are within the Minnesota River Quadrant. So, that includes, and I can flip to it and get you the page number in a second, but the B4 zoning district, not all of it, but portions, and the GIM and GIH zoning districts are within the Minnesota River Quadrant, seen in, in the comprehensive plan as our future next big mixed-use zoning district, long-term planning. So it's being removed, I mean, the redevelopment is happening slowly in that area, but it's being, the height requirement is being removed preemptively.
Okay, so, effectively, Highway 13, we're envisioning, portions, we're envisioning large structures to be developed down the road that could look like buildings along 494 in Bloomington. I mean, we're talking, yep, so we have five-story buildings right now, maybe four-story buildings. And I, I guess, the question I have is not related to that, because I can envision that, I can see that, but the question I have is for all mixed zoning properties, I think we have those scattered throughout the city, especially more and more, like I'm thinking, for instance, a couple of the recent projects that we've approved that were, were for wood frame construction, four to five stories, I mean, those properties, we've put right next to churches, which were previously residentially zoned, because we rezoned them to mix. And I, I guess my concern is that in the mixed-use zoning, those tall properties might not fit the aesthetics as much as they would on the Highway 13 corridor. So I'm, I'm curious about the thought behind that.
So some of the thought comes from what So some of the thought comes from what currently exists and what that mixed-use zoning district is intended to be. So the intent of the mixed-use zoning district is for a more dense area. It actually has a greater density standard than our highest high-density residential zoning district. So the intent of those zoning districts as a whole was already to become a more urban environment and that, that would be why this is included as part of the height restrictions being removed.
So I understand that. I mean, I'm thinking for instance, the, the project, the few projects along County Road 42 right now, near the Lutheran church, the project near Grace United Methodist Church. I mean, these are projects that when we talked about them, we specifically looked at buildings that met the current height limitations in the mixed zone. I don't know that, that I would be supportive of a 20-foot tall building in that area. Do you understand what I'm saying? It wasn't a question, I guess that was rhetorical.
Ms. Garros, do you have a?
Commissioners, something to, to let you know also, this is something that was proposed by city council members for consideration, so it did not come up through staff. In terms of some of the sites, like the Grace United Church, as far as what's recommended for these provisions, it indicates that there's no height limit unless you are in an environmental overlay district, like a shoreline district, a floodplain district, those types of things, those do have height limits. And like Grace United has height limits because it's in shoreline district, so 35 feet is as tall as it could go. But that is kind of what we understand, the intent from, from the council is that they'd like to see this.
And part of the intent as well is that they'd like to see the restriction on height come from the applicant's perspective as far as cost, the change in building materials when the building code kicks in at seven feet, or no, seven feet, seven stories, or whichever the building height is for that. So there are other restraints naturally occurring outside of the zoning ordinance that they would like to be the trigger for someone rather than the zoning ordinance and coming in for a conditional use permit through the additional two or so feet or whatever they're requiring.
Save my comments for discussion?
Yeah, you know, and I just, to make a clarification there too, this, this change doesn't mean that people are going to go in mixed-use lots and start building 50-story skyscrapers or something. That all still has to come through our process. This really is just in the initial stage when developers are looking at, I mean, it removes the standard for that, that part of the consideration, just. Commissioner Banky?
Yeah, I both of Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Timmerman's comments. The through lot, I, I see the point on a lot that couldn't be further subdivided. I don't see it though where the lot is large enough where it could be subdivided and you could end up with two front yards. If you, if you have a lot that exceeds twice the lot size for the, for the zoning and that lot could be subdivided, you could have just put a, a structure significantly closer to the, the front lot, what would become the front lot line. So while I, I don't have a problem with the idea, I, I think that if, like we could suggest that they put a limit on it, for example, if the lot, as long as the lot is less than twice the current zoning, what the current zoning allows. And that way, if you have a lot like the one with the, the car, the guy that was doing the car, that lot goes all the way from Williams Drive down to the frontage road. And if he all of a sudden built closer to the frontage road, but then subdivided, somebody could, is now grandfathered in with a closer to the road setback. So, you know, I, I do think that city council is trying to offer us a lot of things to consider here and I don't know that we have to totally take everything without thinking it through. So I think that would be my suggestion on that one, if, if, you know, that I could see requesting for discussion later. The other thing was exactly what you're talking about with the mix. I think the mix is great with no height restrictions in heart of, in heart of the city. That is consistent with the, with the thinking of what that is supposed to be. It's consistent with Burnsville Center area with redevelopment densification. It's consistent with MRQ, a brand-new area that is, got that as a goal of density. I don't see it on a piece of property next to Valley Ridge Senior Center, which is also a mix. So I do, unless there are tools like floor area ratios or other naturally occurring zoning and building code considerations, you know, I, I do think we have to be a little careful with some of these smaller mixed-use developments that have been rezoned. I mean, are, I mean, are most of our small shopping centers mixed, mixed use? No, or just the ones that are redeveloped? For example, the, the center at Cliff Road and South River Hills Drive, you know, is that a mix or is that a business use currently? Do you, do we know?
That's a B3 PUD.
Okay, so it's, it's currently a B3, so it's not a mix.
Commissioner, I, I think the, the new quick trip that we approved.
That is on a mixed property, absolutely, absolutely. And that could see development, but that, and that is another piece. Though I'm, I'm trying to think of some of the other small neighborhood centers that have existed since I've been here. And they're got, like, Valley Ridge is gone. I mean, it was a very large center and it's gone and now it's something else. So some of these other areas, you're going to have that same redevelopment, which is our goal. But I don't think that some of those neighborhood centers are appropriate for no height limits. So there are my two cents there. And perhaps I should continue. I think the only other, I was, I was a little confused, Ms. Arnold, about the, the pet one. So under your, your background, it says pet grooming is currently allowed as a use accessory to pet shop. So pet grooming has been added to, as a use wherever pet shop is permitted. You don't mean that it's included with pet shop still, you mean it's, if pet shop isn't, is an approved use in a, in an area, then pet grooming has been added as a use underneath?
That's correct.
Got it, okay. It was, I read it the first time and then adult daycare sort of read it the same way for me. I think the only other thing that I have a little issue with here is the, the provision limiting, well, there's two parts of this. The one is the 24-inch from grade. And only because the applicant for the pet hospital was very clear that his product was approved to eight inches above grade. But grade is defined as six inches below the floor, so there's a two-inch gap there. I realize it's their job to, to cover that, but I, I, you know, I don't, I also see that it doesn't meet some of the standards that we have in architectural tools, architectural guidelines. And I, I'm assuming that this means that is dropping off the architectural guideline list now because if we're, if we're eliminating, it's gone. But yet we have the requirement in the architectural tools to, and I don't think this is specific to any particular height, but it reads that the building shall have a base, an established ground level building accents, a base and a, and a top. And that three-tier building design is, is basically written into our guidelines. And this doesn't eliminate it as a design thing, it simply eliminates the requirement that the base be stone or brick or some other material other than stucco or IFIS.
Correct, we're just proposing to get rid of the limitation with the, the stucco part. You're correct, the, the guidelines are not proposed to be changed, so that still, the guidelines are to have those base middle and upper distinctions.
Right, it's just that the, the base could be some other material then instead of those. It, it doesn't mean it won't be, it just means it doesn't have to be. Okay, just, I just wanted to point that out. The other part was the language that, at the end of eliminating, okay, so if the material is, shall only apply on those faces, facades that face a street. I presume that the, the way that that's going to be looked at is it needs to physically face the street, it's not visible from the street. So a side which doesn't face the street but is totally visible from the street does not need to meet that standard.
That's correct.
I don't like that at all. It, to me, it, it basically makes the city cheap. You really have now taken away foresight architecture, the requirement for it. And I think when you get to this level of building, I think you need that.
Did this originally come up with the, the senior housing project over, off of Grand? Okay.
Yes.
That's what, that's what I thought.
Well, but think about where that one is. That one doesn't have a lot of, you know, that one doesn't have a lot of visibility from, from the side streets.
Right.
Because of where it is. But, you know, I, I think a lot of our, our city as it develops and densifies, you're going to see more and more of the buildings as other stuff around it comes down. And if, if your, if your primo front ends at the corner and you turn the corner and you have a blank wall, you know, it really doesn't improve the, the character of the city, you know? So that, that's my opinion on that one.
I may agree with you on that one.
I think I'm done.
Additional comments? Commissioner Banky?
Commissioner Timmerman? What page are you looking at on that one?
Oh, I was reading it from, from chapters 19 and 23.
Special requirements, that paragraph.
Yeah, it's the last sentence of that. This change has been added, I'm sorry, that's the city's direction. Do we, do we know if that was a unanimous recommendation from the city council or if it was not unanimous?
Let me, I can look really quickly and see. It says council consensus, I'm not sure about.
Okay, so majority anyway. This amendment also includes a provision that the limited materials of no more than 50% shall only apply on those facades that face a street and not those that face a neighboring property. And I think I know what the goal was, is that, you know, why have the back of the building have that, which I get, I don't always agree with it, but that's less of a problem for me than the sides where it's totally visible from neighboring properties and streets and public properties.
So we could work to change that language to maybe mention visibility. So per the council consensus note was for eliminate limited materials for those facades not facing a street. Within the discussion, there was discussion about where, where it's seen from, whether it's seen from the road, things like that. The final note was to consensus, consensus to change for those not facing a street, but that we may have some.
So possibly they were on the same track we are here to a degree.
Possibly.
Okay.
Additional questions for Ms. Arnold? All right, we will open the public hearing at 7:47 PM. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing right at 7:48 PM. Commissioners? I know. The other two, I kind of stretched it.
There you go.
Commissioners, comments, questions, motions. Commissioner Timmerman?
I would just like to further the discussion on the, the height requirements, the mixed use and encourage that we consider leaving that as a conditional use permit in that particular zoning area.
Commissioners, would that be something that you would want to take, take more of a look at, like where those areas are? We could bring, if you wanted to, this can be continued, part of it can be forwarded and part of it kept back for additional review. It's up to you.
You know, frankly, it's, it seems just in the last several months that we've been looking at, at moving more of our properties into the mixed use and I like that idea. But as we move more and more in, we're going to end up with more of these pockets as well. And so it might be good to look at those or at least have the city council understand some of the, the comments or considerations we've had to take a step back on this particular item. And, and maybe they'll share our, our commentary.
Commissioner Banky?
Is it, I'm sorry, true, is it possible that we discuss it currently as mixed within the, the gateway and the heart of the city? And, you mean, would those areas be able to be separated as a mixed use from the other mixed uses in the city? Or because it's mixed, it's mixed all the way through?
I think that's really how we define it. If you would want to say, you know, heart of the city is, would already be taken care of because that's separate.
HOC, yeah.
Yeah, but if you want to just mix within the gateway, I think that could be looked at.
Well, I think, yeah, mixing the gateway, I think is the thing. But I think, I think Commissioner Timmerman's right. I think that if we can look at where they are, it might give us a better handle on what more text.
Right, I'd be, I'd be fine, you know, proposing these ordinance changes to the city council with heart of the city and MRQ and then leaving other mixed throughout the city for further consideration.
And it may be also, we will be working towards developing those transit-oriented development.
Yep.
Districts and zones and maybe with that, you know, that would also help kind of hone in on where these locations might be.
And we might have other.
Or if you'd even want to, you know, go there.
Yeah, we might have other tools that might come out, like the floor area ratios where, you know, you can build a certain-sized building as long as you don't exceed twice the size of this, of this, of the lot, you know, knowing that that means a tall building with parking mostly underground. You know, I mean, there's ways of looking at, at FARs to really help with your form in your zoning.
So.
So take looks out.
Yeah, so I guess can we clarify before we make a motion how we make that motion?
Well, I think we can talk about it and whoever makes it can.
Because there's that, there's that issue.
Or you can say no to it too, anyway.
So we've got that issue, we've got the 50% issue as well. And was there one other, the thorough, the through?
The through, the through lots, yeah. So I'd be happy to make the motion with those items.
So I, I think on, I think on the, the Timmerman height issue.
Right.
I think I'm, I'm in agreement on that, that that, that, there, there are certain areas that seem much more conducive to that and with, particularly with the effort to, with the trend now of making more mixed-use development, like you said, and atypical areas, I think that requires a little more thought, but, so I would agree with that. Did you want to talk about the 50%?
Well, I mean, I did, I guess I don't know how you guys feel about it, so.
That's a good.
No, I, I agree with that point in regards to what you're being able to see, because you, your front may not be exactly where everybody's coming from. You see, I'm getting, I mean, you may have to come around to get to the front and the whole side has nothing. And I think from an architectural standpoint, I think he's correct. There's a nice point out on his part to.
I, well, and I think this whole issue arose basically because of that senior housing and the one backside that doesn't face anything but trees and another. And there was a concern about it from that property and I think it became an issue in the council, council race this last year as well, but I, I get what you're saying as well. I mean, I think I voted against it, the, on the, against waiving the requirement on the, on the, that project, but.
Well, I, I think the key is not so much that we're trying to require building owners to spend a lot of money, it's simply that if the building is visible, you know, we do have a, a certain standard that we're after. And I, I feel like the way this is currently written or been suggested to be written, that it's no different than, you know, pretty much the lowest-end stock house where you walk out and the front is hardy and you go around the corner and it's vinyl siding. And you can see it, it, as you walk down the street, you can see it. And it's very clear that, that, okay, they went cheap in the corner and, you know, that's my attitude about it. I think you're looking out for the best interest of the city that way, yeah.
So would your, we're not quite there yet, but you're, you're, you would propose to reword that as, as part of the motion?
I, I think that, I think that is, as, as Ms. Arnold said, is that there was some discussion amongst the council about visibility. And I think that the language should be written perhaps to address that a little stronger so that, you know, if you, clearly if you back up to trees, if you back up to another commercial building, industrial building, you know, do we want to hold your feet to the fire for that? Absolutely not. It's a, it's, it's a whole different part of the building. Does the sides need to match the front? Not necessarily. You can do it, you can do the character, you can bring the character along. It's just to go from one thing on the front to the same back and sides, to me feels not correct.
Those two issues, was there one with?
Then the, the through lot, you know, just that, I think there should be a size of lot limit on that, that obviously if the lot can be subdivided, then the ability to reduce the setbacks should be, should have other requirements to it. You know, I mean, maybe it's eliminated, maybe it can't happen, maybe it, you know, maybe that, maybe that other through lot, maybe that other side of the street, it's a street that does not have access, for example, a county road with a fence, no, no problem then, but if the lot can be subdivided and used from that other street, then you essentially could have another real front and not just a street front. And then I don't think we've really done what the goal is.
Any comments on any of those? Do we have consensus kind of on those? It seems, seems that way, it's just, how, how to do the motion? Did Commissioner Banky want to take a stab at it?
I will, I think I will.
We need to reread the headline first.
Yes, yeah. Chair, I would, I would have the Planning Commission recommend City Council approval of the proposed ordinances, with the exception of the double-furnished lots in chapters seven, twelve, and thirteen, with some language being drafted to at least acknowledge the possibility of a double-furnished lot being subdividable in the future, and what effect that might have on it. And then on chapters nineteen and twenty-three, to look at the language again of the fifty percent applying only to the facades that face a street, and address it more to the visibility issue. And currently removing the height restriction elimination in the mixed zoning from chapters nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-two B, twenty-two C, and twenty-three for further review.
Okay.
So everything else would go to him.
Did that make sense to Ms. Garros?
Yes.
And Ms. Arnold? Commissioner Roberts?
Second.
Oh, you've got a second, you've got a second already? Could you just restate, so, all right, any further discussion? I think that was, that was taking a lot of complex product here, having some good, quick discussions, so. Any discussion on that? All right, we did have the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, okay. That brings us to item six, public hearing for Freedom Enterprises LLC for a conditional use permit amendment to remove conditions requiring the Burnsville Motors dealership building to be increased to at least ten thousand square feet for the site located at two thousand Highway thirteen, Frontage Road North. Ms. Garros is back.
We're back.
Getting your steps in.
Yes, we like to do that, just to change things up. We do have the site, which is the Burnsville Motors site, as we discussed, this site does have a conditional use permit for outdoor storage and display purposes. The structure was built back in two thousand four, and then they received two extensions to add on, basically another two thousand two hundred square feet, which would get them to the ten thousand square feet. Those extensions were approved in two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen. So basically, by December of this year, they're supposed to have either a permit pulled, or the addition, so that the entire building footprint equals ten thousand square feet. The applicant indicated that they do not have a need, or an interest, to expand beyond what has currently been approved. When the project was approved, they indicated basically an addition to be on the west, excuse me, the east side of the building, and they've not needed to do that. And as we have discussed with the previous ordinance change for that ten thousand square foot, from staff's perspective, I think that the Planning Commission has made good sense in discussing, when you look at the building and how it's situated on the property, and what's happened with that property over the years, actually, the site has been reduced from County Road realignment and taking, so it's even smaller than what they had addition, or had dealt with from the beginning. So from a staff perspective, we concur with the applicant, and our recommendation is to allow them to modify their conditional use permit, taking that ten thousand square foot requirement out. And with that, I can stand for questions.
That is quite the maze of easements, the easement map that you showed us with all the colors.
Yeah.
Never quite seen any.
It's quite a project.
Quite, it's something. So, a question, so, and you explained this in the background material, too, so the ordinance change, so we still need to do this?
Yes, because their conditional use permit runs with the land, so they're always subject to those conditions.
Okay.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Oh, okay. And Commissioner Banky?
I think you, I think you actually beat me to it. Good for now.
Additional questions?
This would be a public hearing also.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at eight o'clock exactly. Anyone who'd like to speak can come forward and identify themselves for the record. Last chance for one tonight. We are closing the public hearing at eight oh one.
Yeah, we can round it.
We rounded up, rounded up on that one, so, okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Banky?
Yeah, while I voted for the, for the extending to, the two thousand fourteen extension, I did vote for that on this commission, but honestly, given the current situation with us changing the B-four rules anyway, and the observation about the other facilities in the area that are similar use without the restrictions, just fairness says this has to change, in my opinion.
Additional comments? Commissioner Roberts?
No, no, I meant, we're good.
Okay, oh, you're good, you're good. No, I would agree, and I just, as you read this, they don't need to expand the building, but the city would tell them they had to expand it if we didn't do this, so I think this makes really good sense to me as well, so I would either entertain comments or a motion. Commissioner Roberts?
I move to the City Council through, approval of the C E P amendment application to remove conditions of the earlier C E P approval requiring the building size to be increased by, to ten thousand square feet, with the following conditions, one, A, B, and C.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Banky?
Second to correct my earlier vote.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of tonight's agenda, number seven, updates.
So the.
Ms. Arnold?
Currently, no items on the June tenth Planning Commission meeting. There will be new commissioner training that evening for the new commissioners that have been interviewing this evening. Also, the peace of mind addition variance conditional use permit and plat was approved by the Planning Commission, or was approved by the City Council. In between Planning Commission and City Council, the applicant reached out to the building official and asked to discuss the twenty-four-inch requirement that was discussed earlier this evening. Working with the building official, they were able to determine that it was a rainscreen material and not subject to the twenty-four-inch requirement, so the condition was modified in language to state that they meet all standards of our architectural materials requirements, and approved on consent with that language.
Good work.
So our next meeting for Planning Commission would actually be June twenty-fourth, back on a Monday night, so that's good. And if anyone is interested in the new commissioner training, we do have an agenda for that. Commissioners, you've already been through it, but if you want to come, June tenth, six thirty, in the council chambers.
Excellent, good refresher. Commissioner Timmerman?
I have a question for Ms. Garros or Ms. Arnold. Up until about four days ago, the TIF approval for the Burnsville Center was up in the air, and the legislature just convened, or they just ended their session. I'm curious, did we get approval in the final tax bill for that TIF district?
That I do not know. We can find out and email the commissioners on that. I know that we had, for unknown reasons, all of the other communities that wanted it were included in the bill, and Burnsville was not, and I know that the mayor, Jenny Faulkner, our community development director and others, have worked very hard to try to get that in, and we'll find out tomorrow and email the commissioners on the status of that.
I know there was a lot of last-minute wrangling, so I'm hoping that got in.
Exactly.
Anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.